Praise the Lord, dear brothers and sisters.
We are so thankful for your presence.
Once again, we greet you in the precious name of our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ for this evening meeting.
We are so thankful for your presence.
We are welcoming all, wherever you are, and kindly take your bibles and sit at one place, and please make yourself free to hear God's word.
We are so thankful for your presence.
So you can share this link to your dear ones also.
We will share this link with our friends.
So that they also can hear God's word and benefit it.
We will pray and begin our gathering. Let us pray and begin our gathering.
Our gracious, loving Himalaya Father.
May your mercy be with us.
In the precious name of our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ, we come into your presence.
We are so thankful for your presence.
Thank you, Lord, your love which thou hast bestowed upon us from the cross of Calvary.
While we were yet sinners and godly and enemies to you,
thank you, Lord, for your great love which you have showed upon us.
Even today, loving Father, and you are the God who made us holy because of your shed blood on the cross of Calvary.
Thank you, Lord, you redeemed us and made us thine own people. Thank you, Lord, you added us in the family of God which is the church of the Lord Jesus Christ. Thank you, Lord, the blessed Holy Spirit which you have given us. Thank you for the guidance which you are giving us every day. Thank you for your grace, Lord. Thank you, Lord, your compassions are new every morning. Even today, you remembered us and Lord, and made us to come together in your presence, Lord, for these three Bible studies. Thank you, Lord, for thy help in the morning and also afternoon. Thank you, Lord, you have brought us in this evening hour also. Loving Father, and speak to us through thy powerful word. Lord, thy word will not go vain. Thou art the God who wants to work in us. We may be touched by thy word and transformed into the image of Lord Jesus Christ. Loving Father, and Lord, anoint thy servant those who are going to stand and minister thy word. Especially remember our dear brother Neel Paul, all the way from Philadelphia, USC. Give thy grace, Lord, to deliver thy word and also to translate. Lord, this time may be eternally profitable. Loving Father, committing ourselves unto thee, once again, give us, Lord, and time of singing, touch our throats, and also thy good hand may be rested upon us and also those who are playing instrument. Give us the songs to sing. Speak to us through the songs also. Thy name may be highly glorified. Lord, we are remembering tomorrow, if it is, if thy coming is terrace, loving Father, and Lord, and we are praying for the Lord's ministry all over the world, in Missipan, also in Elshada, in all the assemblies in Bangalore. Loving Father, those who are going to stand, fill them with thy word. Once again, we are committing ourselves, we ask this prayer with thanksgiving in Jesus Christ's precious name we pray. Thou wilt sing praises to God, and we are singing all songs so that you can recollect and sing along with us. So, this song is, 11th anniversary of Karmel, song number one, from this book, "Eesu Prabhu Mahimagala Raja", this song we'll sing. Esu Prabhu Mahimagala Raja. Esu Prabhu Mahimagala Raja, teke prasansa chellunugaka. Yuga, yuga mulavarku, unna vaadavay na deva. Yuga, yuga mulavarku, unna vaadavay na deva. Sarva bhattulayokka, sutthiki yogyuda. Sarva bhattulayokka, sutthiki yogyuda. Esu Prabhu Mahimagala Raja, teke prasansa chellunugaka. Esu Prabhu Mahimagala Raja, teke prasansa chellunugaka. Sarva shakti galasamachudavi ve, sarvamulonunna vaada. Sarva shakti galasamachudavi ve, sarvamulonunna vaada. Sutthi aaradhana, prasansalakuyogyudavi ve. Sutthi aaradhana, prasansalakuyogyudavi ve. Sarva adharana mahima, ayishvaryaganuda. Sarva sushthiche suthimpa baduchunna vaada. Sarva sushthiche suthimpa baduchunna vaada. Esu Prabhu Mahimagala Raja, teke prasansa chellunugaka. Esu Prabhu Mahimagala Raja, teke prasansa chellunugaka. Rutaagnathathoora, kirtinthu ninno, neethu gunagana mulakai. Rutaagnathathoora, kirtinthu ninno, neethu gunagana mulakai. Nitya chivamuloh, aagamuno sagithi ve. Nitya chivamuloh, aagamuno sagithi ve. Sarva akasha prithivi, sarva eshwaryooda. Sarva sushthiche suthimpa baduchunna vaada. Sarva sushthiche suthimpa baduchunna vaada. Esu Prabhu Mahimagala Raja, teke prasansa chellunugaka. Esu Prabhu Mahimagala Raja, teke prasansa chellunugaka. Yuga, yuga mulavarku, unna vaadavay na deva. Yuga, yuga mulavarku, unna vaadavay na deva. Sarva bhattulayokka, sutthiki yogyuda. Sarva bhattulayokka, sutthiki yogyuda. Esu Prabhu Mahimagala Raja, teke prasansa chellunugaka. Esu Prabhu Mahimagala Raja, teke prasansa chellunugaka. We'll sing song number four from same song sheet. Chodu Prabhu Yesuni, Prema Prabhu Yesuni, it's the youth camp song, let us sing this song. Kindly join with us and sing along with us wherever you are. We'll sing one English song. Song number twenty, "Oh Happy Day That Fixed My Choice", twenty from English song books. We'll sing one tree and lost. Oh happy day, that fixed my choice. On thee my Savior and my God. Hail may this glowing heart rejoice, until its rapture's all abroad. Happy day, happy day, when Jesus washed my sins away. He teaches me to watch and pray, and live rejoicing every day. Happy day, happy day, when Jesus washed my sins away. Distant the grave, transaction stand. I am my Lord, and he is mine. He drew me in, I followed on, chomped to confess thou wast divine. Happy day, happy day, when Jesus washed my sins away. He teaches me to watch and pray, and live rejoicing every day. Happy day, happy day, when Jesus washed my sins away. I have endured hard earned salmo, that tore renew to really heal. Till in life's letter I bow, and blessing dead are born so dear. Happy day, happy day, when Jesus washed my sins away. He teaches me to watch and pray, and live rejoicing every day. Happy day, happy day, when Jesus washed my sins away. We'll sing one Kannada song. Song number sixteen, from the same song book, "Namajyothi Agi Neethi". First two stands, last stands, we'll sing. Namajyothi Agi Neethi. Namajyothi Agi Neethi, Jivitayaatreyali. Namajyothi Agi Neethi, Jivitayaatreyali. Namakkai pidadana madhivare, tumbu manadindha himbalisveve. Namakkai pidadana madhivare, tumbu manadindha himbalisveve. Namajyothi Agi Neethi, Jivitayaatreyali. Namajyothi Agi Neethi, Jivitayaatreyali. Namondhi giruvay andheli thi, maarpada danamadhivare. Namondhi giruvay andheli thi, maarpada danamadhivare. Paravasere vatanakadha deva, nammanadesivini. Paravasere vatanakadha deva, nammanadesivini. Namakkai pidadana madhivare, tumbu manadindha himbalisveve. Namakkai pidadana madhivare, tumbu manadindha himbalisveve. Namajyothi Agi Neethi, Jivitayaatreyali. Namajyothi Agi Neethi, Jivitayaatreyali. Maradanta kahiada, semegalu eshtiraru. Maradanta kahiada, semegalu eshtiraru. Madhuravagi maaduvakadha, ndakke saaguveve. Madhuravagi maaduvakadha, ndakke saaguveve. Namakkai pidadana madhivare, tumbu manadindha himbalisveve. Namakkai pidadana madhivare, tumbu manadindha himbalisveve. Namajyothi Agi Neethi, Jivitayaatreyali. Namajyothi Agi Neethi, Jivitayaatreyali. Nimba pidudillayandhelidhi, abayava neethi. Nimba pidudillayandhelidhi, abayava neethi. Neethumaaanidavupakarakani, namvave ghana padisveve. Neethumaaanidavupakarakani, namvave ghana padisveve. Namakkai pidadana madhivare, tumbu manadindha himbalisveve. Namakkai pidadana madhivare, tumbu manadindha himbalisveve. Namajyothi Agi Neethi, Jivitayaatreyali. Namajyothi Agi Neethi, Jivitayaatreyali. Before we hear God's word, let us sing one English song. More about Jesus would I know, song number fifty-four from English. More about Jesus would I know, more of his grace to all the show. More of his saving full as sea, more of his love who died for me. More, more about Jesus, more, more about Jesus. More of his saving full as sea, more of his love who died for me. More about Jesus let me learn, more of his holy beauties. Spirit of God my teacher be, showing the things of Christ to me. More, more about Jesus, more, more about Jesus. More of his saving full as sea, more of his love who died for me. More about Jesus in his word, holding communion with my Lord. Hearing his voices every line, making its grateful singing part. More, more about Jesus, more, more about Jesus. More of his saving full as sea, more of his love who died for me. More about Jesus on his throne, riches in glory all is own. More of his kingdom sure in praise, more of his coming prince of peace. More, more about Jesus, more, more about Jesus. More of his saving full as sea, more of his love who died for me. Let us sing one verse. What a wonderful treasure. The Grand Old Book. The Grand Old Book, the Grand Old Book. You'll find the words of comfort wherever you may look. In sorrow or in pain, his promises are plain. So keep and believing in the Grand Old Book. Ashrishtham pa, radhamu lo, chota chuti na, adarana unnadi. Sukadukamulo, vadhanam unnadi, vi swasam chidyaaninchudi. So it's a joint privilege to have our dear brother Neel Paul, and our miss for this evening, to share God's word. And our miss for this evening to share God's word.
Isayantram Bible parichare, vaaki parichare korakai. Manamadlo saavodu Anil, Anil Paulgaranuta idantho gopu santoshkarani.
All the way from Philadelphia, USA.
Amerikaloni twenty Philadelphia, Philadelphia la ainutar.
So looking after assembly there.
Akarun twenty sangan, sangan uguch badi thavastinaraina.
Kindly pray for him, for his family and also the church over there.
Aynu koraku, aynu kutumunkoraku, akarun twenty sangamukoraku daichas pradinchana.
Now brother will bring God's word for us.
Ipudu saavodu manukorakai vaakiyamu andinchana.
This message will be translated to Telugu, to Tamil, English, Telugu and Tamil.
Kaavatiyaka vaakiyamu, uh, Tel, Englishunchi Telugu, Teluguunchi Tamilloke tajmahchee parathu.
Let us hear God's word.
I bring greetings from Bethany House of Worship, Philadelphia. It's really a great blessing and a privilege for me to be able to connect with Mezpa, the church from Bangalore. So I just thank the Lord for this opportunity and I thank the Lord for each and every elders there and those who have made it possible, I just thank you all. It is, it's a blessing for me also, though I am not really very good with the technology, but by God's grace I am able to connect now, so that is very good. Thank you. So what has been on my heart.
Philadelphia, me andrakku daavandramu tenejassunnaanu. Yekka avakashmu, devanna kanugrechnanuke, devadu nentho vandrasuni. Yekka avakash michnannuke, mispa, Elshada, mispa la nu twenty padalakku, pranenon, prantrana. Nakku antagat technology teleepenapi, devadu sahaayinchesaru, yuvan connectaavudanke, prapanchubinchadu devadu kivandram. Ah, Bethany house of worship Philadelphia, naanumgalu kodu, indavidamaga connectaai, pesudarka, kartharainu koduthan, tarunatharka, kartharakku nambasiddhutigre. Mukhyamaga, mispa house of worship, mooperakum, angirprayala visvasukum, naanindhatarnathik koduthatharka, avukkamakku, naanandruvithirithipalgre.
I want to share the desire of God believer as we turn to first Peter, chapter one and reading from verse fourteen, fifteen and sixteen.
Yaavu koorika, visvasulpachshu la nu twenty. Vishyanku, pratikanaalukavat jayan, padnavi padhayanavachnallundi, meethu panchkalanikavatthuna. Devaunadeyavirupavum, visvasikam pachshama girupadinaale, avukkam vennu venu, unru pedru kadhaniravam, naanka madigarathirundhi, naan slobasangali vasikavirumagre.
First Peter, chapter one, verse fourteen says, as obedient children, not fashioning yourselves according to the former lusts in your ignorance, but as he which hath called you is holy, so be he holy in all manner of conversation, because it is written, be he holy for I am holy.
Madhupatipatrika, malta jayemu, padnavi chupadharavat, neel pashuddhunai, naanigalika, mirnu pashuddhalayidhadi, va, vraybadhadiyadhi kaga, miru vidhayalagu pillalai, ajnana dachilo, meekunna, aashalana, nishirinchu, pravatthampaka, memunu pillichinuvaadu, pashuddhalayanna, prakaramu, mirnu samastapraavathanayandu, pashuddhalayundadi. Unru pedru kinnayedhuniravam, unra madigarum, padanangalindhu, padanavarae. Ningal munneye, ungal ariyamayinalae, kundirundha, ichsekalinbadi, ini nadavamal, keelpadigare, pillaygalaiyirundhi, ungalayalaitthuvar, pashuddhama, irikkirdhu poele, ningalum, ungal, nadakkay, nadakkayle, ellam, re, ellam, nadakkay, ellavachile, yuum, pashuddharayirungal, naan pashuddhar, aagyal, ningalum, pashuddharayirungal, lindri, edhidi, iknndadhe, ikkridde.
So we have to really ask ourselves, do we really understand, are we holy? Can we be holy?
Kaavut manu, vadi kavasina, prashnandante, manamu, nizanga pashuddhina, namama, manasala, kodakalamama. Namay naame, or kailvi, kettukal, unmayaga, nam pashuddhavanagali, ikkromama, illa, unmayaga, nam pashuddhavanagala, ikkamudima?
Because this is God's desire and his purpose and his will, that we be a holy people.
Kaavut, andhante, idu devanaka, udeshmu, ayanaka, pranalika, iyundhi, attha, manamu, pashuddhalayindhalan, antande, ayanaka, vaancha, iyundhi, manu pachshunga. Kedhakandra, devanade, sitthama, irikradhi, manamu, aurukka, aurukka, pashuddhama, ikkavendu, mindru, aur, namel, vaanjaya, irikrar.
And for that, you know, he gives all provisions for it, but you know, we really have to understand, sometimes because of our ignorance, we, we cannot, we don't understand his purpose in our life.
Kaavut, dhanukarke, devadu, samastavantrun, sadupayalakku, anugreystaru, aitte, manu, nilakshana, badi, manu, alakshana, badi, konni, parayalu, manamu, dhanay, abdhunjeskukunna, unta. Adarka, devayana, ellam, salukagale, karthar, namu, kodithirikrar, ana, nammude, vudhi, inmeelum, alla, alakshya, padathadu, man, naalum, naam, adai, purundukolamal, poigro.
God's desire always is to bless us.
Devanaka, koorika, ellapu, kodu, manu, aashudinchita, divinchita. Devaunade, virupam, yappolda, namay, aashravadithu, aur, aashravadikavendu, mindu, bade.
Yeah, we read in Jeremiah twenty-nine, verse eleven and twelve, you can read that brother to save time.
Uh, sapansadre, jeskutukarke, neerma, 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 jayemu, uh, padapunnu, paridavachnalsaltha. Ermian, pruttagam, iruthi, unbaadu, padanuntra, padanandavasana. Neeram, ungal, udeshindu, sagathranne, nerudhunu, rabaavukalamandu, meeku, nireeshan kaligatikavi, samadhana karamayana, udeshunle, gani, aani karamaynavu, kaavu, idhey, ho, vaakku, miru, nakku, marapetudhu, reeni, miru, nakku, pradhana, chedu, chedu, vattureeni, meru, me, manu, i, aalakintanu.
So, so you know, we can understand, you know, the God's thoughts towards us are only for good and not evil. So you know, if we really understand that, you know, what he has done all the time, you know, he has, he loved us so much as we read in John three sixteen, God so loved the world. He gave his only begotten son, whosoever believed on him will not perish but have everlasting life.
Kaavut, manu, pachshunga, ayanaka, udeshmu, ani, kodu, ayy, meleka, ni, kii, dhada, haani karamaynavu, kaavu, adhamagadu, ayan, manu, entha, gana, preemisunaru, and, yohansavat, mudadham, palaravachin, prakaran, chusnathai, the devadu, thop, preemichanu, kaga, than, adhitikum, maan, papputnu, ayan, visvasum, chawadu, achip, kani, dzidham, padinat, ayan, anugreinchana, manu, jalis. Avukkam, iruphumu, avukkam, sitthamu, namel, nanmika, agave, irikradhi, the, the, amika, gal, aagyal, than, kapthar, namel, evulavu, kurindirikrar, yovan, moondru, padanarin, prakarmaga, devan, tamal, oray, peran, kumarani, visvasikravani, yavano, avan, ketup, pogamal, nitya, jevani, adiyam, badi, ki, avar, itandharli, ivulavai, vilagati, lanku, kurda.
So the great purpose of God is that we should be saved.
Avukkam, devanaka, mukhyamantrundi, goppa udeshu, mindante, manamu, rakshana, pandali. Kartharudiyam, kimmana, periyu, udeshu, mindan, namrachi, padayavendum, endadhe.
So the provision he gives us is his, for holy living is the Holy Spirit.
Kaavut, manamu, pashuddhanga, jivinchutukorakai, manukka, aynachinatundi, sadupayamayandante, pashuddhaapadheyudu. Namam, nam, pashuddhavanagala, vaalavendum, endadhar, kaga, or, namukkutthu, salukayinavendu, pashuddhavi, anav, devan, namukkutthirikrar.
So you see, he, living, holy living will not be possible if you are just a nominal Christian. You may be going to church, you may be doing all those things, but unless you are born again, you know, we cannot enjoy, we cannot be holy at all.
Kaavut, yekka, pashuddanga, jivinchitana, twenty, nee, christadu, gunto, nama, kathup, christadu, jivtana, garptunat, thaitan, sadhimukka, adukkha, alamu, thiriki, janmichu, thara, matramay, ayan, pashuddhavadu, devanu, sahaayu, thara, matramay, manu, pashuddanga, jivinchitani, ki, sadhimautu. Pashuddhavanagala, vaalvaadu, endhal, sadarnamagam, devanade, vittu, kappu, sabi, kappu, ikkundu, vandhar, aradipadu, mattu, malan, pashuddhavi, nalay, namrachi, kapattu, pashuddhava, avi, anav, namukkudhu, seedala, nam, pashuddhavanagala, vaalamudi.
So we read in Ephesians, chapter one and verse thirteen, that in whom he also trusted after that you heard the word of truth, the gospel of your salvation, in whom after that you believe, you were sealed with the Holy Spirit of promise.
Kaavut, Ephesians, madhuram, matthudan, padavodavachnangal, chalutam, mirnu, satyavakamunu, anaga, me, rakshanasavathanu, vinay, krishthanandu, visvasum, anji, vaagdhanam, chayavana, atmacheta, mudhiripapadithri. Ephesri, kinniravam, unra madigarum, padimunru, vasanathin, prakarmaga, ningalum, ungal, rachi, pin, suvisheshamagaya, satya, vasanathik, ketti, visvasat, visvasigalaga, visvasigalana, bodhu, vaagadatam, panna, batta, pashuddhavi, naal, avi, al, aru, ah, mudhirikipotthi, patthirigal.
So we understand that, you know, first to really have the blessing of God, the total blessing of God begins with being born again.
Kaavut, manamu, din, din, vattu, adhunjeskukal, adhunjeskukal, kinnan, antande, devanaka, divana, aashiravadmu, mara, jivtalo, thiriki, janmichitana, nuncha, aramichapaduthundi. Naam, idhar, githari, idhar, naan, purundukolavendu, dinnandra, devanade, aashiravadu, naan, peravendu, mandaal, naan, marabadi, pirandala, ta, vira, naam, indha, aashiravadutte, peramudiyadhe.
So we see that many times because of our ignorance, even after being born again, we may not be really able to enjoy all the blessings that God wants to give us.
Aitte, manu, dhuskam, manu, ayanaka, manu, thiriki, janmichinapattikisaitanu, manaka, uh, nilakshana, badi, ajnana, badi, devadu, manu, kivadalsukunatundi, aashiravam, annittini, manu, anubhansukunna, ipotam. Ana, naam, ikkridha, ariyamayinalae, naam, rachi, kapattu, piragam, kodu, nam, devan, namukkarlapattu, andha, aashiravadu, naam, naam, peraman, poigro.
See, the God has called us to live in holy living, that we may receive all the blessings that he wants to give us.
Kaavut, devadu, kivadalsukunatundi, aashiravadu, ni, manu, gichutukorakai, pashuddhama, jivtama, manu, jivinchala, udeshmu, ayanavala, pillushkunna. Aagyal, devan, namakkukorukavendu, ellam, pashuddhavi, aashiravadu, kodukavendu, mindu, kaga, nam, pashuddhavanagala, vaalavendu, mindru, avur, vudhi, nishay, tirikrar.
As we read in first Peter, chapter one, verse fourteen, it says, as obedient children, not fashioning yourselves according to the former lusts in your ignorance. We, we are very ignorant about many things, spiritual things.
Kaavut, madhupatipatrika, madhupatika, padnavi, manu, chaluknatikka, karam, miru, vidhayalagu, pillalai, me, poro, ajanada, shelo, me, poro, majnana, undu, chammaramu. Unru pedru, unru padanangal, edhundevanamaga, ningal munneye, ungal, ariyamayinalae, endhal, naam, idhar, munthaga, naam, ariyamayle, naam, vandukundirundom.
It says, you be holy in all manner of conversation.
Memu, pilluchinavu, pashuddha, prakarmu, samastapraavathanayandu, pashuddhalayundadi. Padanavasatle, ungalayalaitthuvar, pashuddhavara, pashuddhar, irikradhi, poele, ningalum, ungal, nadakkay, ellavachile, yuum, pashuddharayirungal.
No, I speak from experience because when I accepted the Lord Jesus Christ as my Savior, and I had the assurance, I am saved, but you know, I was really happy that I am saved and that's the end of it.
Kaavut, neeru, anubhotam, markalutunna, neeru, 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 thiriji, janmichin, taravat, neeru, thamani, chalu, aitte, neeru, thiriji, janmichin, ante, adhe, anta, manu, ankunna. Naan, anubhotanale, pacekundirikre, naan, rachi, kapattu, pirag, naan, rachi, kapattu, attain, endra, andha, santoshathre, naan, vandukundirundhi.
Well, I have the assurance, my sins are forgiven and you know, I have, I will be in heaven. That is, but you know, that is just the beginning of the blessing that God wants to give us.
Kaavut, idhengana, neeru, naapapnu, chamichipattai, neeru, tapukunna, parlock, rajani, kvalatanu, twenty, ayaka, namika, ayaka, nichayatana, kundhi, devadu, manu, aashiravadu, aramam, matramay, adhi. Ah, ye, ye, neeru, paavgalala, manikapattu, pirag, naan, devan, rajathin, nishimagiruppin, or, or, rajathakana, poduvan, endra, andha, nambikay, karthar, irundhi, karthar, modalavada, kodukka, kodukka, kodikra, aashiravadu, ma, idhiri, ikradhi.
And to really, to really understand, you know, the power and the blessing of the Holy Spirit, you know, we really have to read his word and meditate on it every day.
Kaavut, nizanga, manamu, pashuddhavadu, devanaka, shaktine, thune, divan, abdhunjeskutukorakai, anudhiramu, kodu, devadu, vaakani, chalutu, dyanicharanga, undali. Aagyal, naam, pashuddhavanagali, avi, aashiravadat, tayum, avalam, yuum, kandibidikavendu, mandaal, oborun, naalum, naam, devanade, vasanathay, vasithi, adhi, dyanikavendu, vendu.
See, many a times when we are born again, you know, it depends how much time we are really spending reading his word.
Kaavut, ayanaka, parayalu, manu, thiriji, janmichin, taravat, neeru, ayanaka, sanidra, thutusamangal, thutram, devadu, vaakinchadu, thutram, manadi, varamu, aalachinchar. Naan, marabadi, pirandapirag, devanade, samukhatle, evulavu, nairan, naam, vasanathay, vasithukundirikram, already, samukhatilam, yavatan, evulavu, nairam, kajithukundirikram, mindu, kuditha, nam, yosikavendu.
See, because of our ignorance, you know, we miss the many blessings that God wants to give us.
Kaavut, manaka, ajnana, badi, devadu, manu, kivagortunatundi, anekum, mindatundi, divanalu, aashiravadalu, manu, koolpatthunta. Namadha, ariyamayinalae, devan, namukodukavendu, mindu, virmagra, andha, aashiravadakal, ellam, nam, elandu, porugala, irikram.
So, see, that is why it is really important for every believer to really understand, you know, the word of God is given to us because we, we read in, first, in second Timothy, chapter three, verse sixteen and seventeen, all scripture is given by the, you know, the, by God and is profitable for doctrine, for reproof, for correction, for instruction in righteousness. The man of God may be perfect, thoroughly furnished unto all good works. I read the second Timothy, chapter three, verse sixteen and seventeen.
Kaavut, manu, adhunjeskukal, shume, devanaka, vaakam, manu, kivobadindi, kivobadna, karnavantante, renathipatipatikku, mudadham, palar, padhayanavachnalsal, thirigal, dayavachinadu, sanathadu, pratisekhar, emukku, pauranamaga, sudapadidinatlu, dayavavesham, vannakal, pratilekramu, opodechinchutaknu, kandichutaknu, taputitutaknu, neatiyandu, sikshachayitaknu, prayogakramayam, adhi. Naam, ellavachim, kattukal, unru Timothy, unra madigarum, padanavasatle, edhundirikram, vannamaga, andryum, devavakthi, kuri, ragasyam, anadhi, yavrum, opukaligrabadiye, maga, mainmayum, yolladhi, devam, maamsathinale, velipattar, avi, nalay, neeriyollavu, raayi, indru, vilangapattar.
See, Bible is really a book of instructions for life and the book of wonderful promises of God.
Kaavut, devanaka, vaakiyamu, jivtana, kavasamayantran, entho, pramukkamayam, shall, discontaknu, abhutamayantundi, devanu, vaagdhanam, nu, twenty, grandamgaidhunthundi. Devanade, vasanam, vedam, thana, parukmo, du, naam, jivyathin, namukthay, padigal, ellam, vaagadat, thangal, ellam, thayakri, ellam, ellam, sailgal, madhala, naam, kattukundu, vaalvaadu, kaga, namukthi, kud, adangap, adingirikradhi.
No, we read in, see, first Corinthians and chapter three and verse sixteen.
Ipudu, manu, madhupatikka, rajipatikka, mudadham, jayastha. Unru, kordi, unru, 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 padanavasatle, parpo, padanavam.
Oh, so we see that, you know, God's spirit is, Holy Spirit is given to us, he lives in us.
Kaavut, manu, manukka, pashuddhavadu, devadu, obadadu, ayan, manalo, jivstinadu, anjaapaduthu. Ayal, namakke, the pashuddhavi, anav, kodukapattirikrar, avar, namile, vandukundirikrar, endra, naan, purindhi, ariyavendu.
And in first Corinthians, chapter six and verse nineteen and twenty says, what, knowing not that your body is the temple of the Holy Ghost, which is in you, which you are of God, you are not your own, for you are bought with a price, therefore glorified by God in your body and your spirit, which are God's.
Kaavut, madhupatikka, rajipatikka, madhupatika, aravatam, pratam, diravachnala, me, devam, devanavam, kankarim, padi, me, lannap, pashuddhavam, aalayamayandhal, neemiravagara, miru, me, sattukaru, vilapattu, kanna, pannavarkanuka, me, devam, thod, devani, ayma, parchudi. Unru, kordi, unru, unru, aramadigarum, padthamudhu, irudham, vasanangal, le, ungal, shereeram, anadhi, ningal, devanale, petrum, sa, ungalin, tangi, irikradhi, tangiyum, irikradhi, pashuddhavi, nuri, aalayamay, irikradhi, endrum, ningal, ungal, orakal, alavendrum, ariyirgalaa, kri, kriyathukku, kolapattirigale, aagyal, devanukku, orayavargal, agia, ungal, shereerathay, naalum, ungal, avi, naalum, devanay, magimay, paduthangal.
So if we are really conscious of the fact that the Holy Spirit lives in us, we are bought with a price, how careful we must be in our life, in our conduct, in our conversation, in our behavior.
Kaavut, nizanga, manamu, idhinga, pashuddhavadu, devadu, malat, jivstinadu, twenty, uh, manu, yekka, grahimu, grahimku, manu, kaligatikai, the, manu, ayanaka, pravathana, manu, ayanaka, maata, manu, ayanaka, nadavadika, manu, ayanaka, samastavishala, manu, entha, jahatakaligundali. Pashuddhavi, anav, namile, vandukundirikrar, endra, naam, arindam, naal, namal, nara, thayilu, peechilu, nam, narama, vaalkil, nara, padellam, evulavu, pashuddhama, agavendu.
Now we read in first Corinthians, chapter two and verse nine and ten, it says, but as it is written, I hath not seen nor yet heard, neither have entered into the heart of man the things which God hath prepared for them that love him. But God hath revealed them to us by his spirit, for the spirit searcheth all things, ay, the deep things of God.
Avukkam, madhupatikka, rajipatikka, madhupatika, jyothi, padavachnali, indhar, kuchid, devadu, than, preemichu, aarukorakai, yavisudapaduchana, abhi, kanti, karamalayidhu, chevuk, venambalayidhu, manisha, vudhu, manukku, gochramukka, alayidhu, anivraybadhadi, manukka, devadu, parthni, than, atmala, bailapaduchinadu, a, atm, annittini, devan, marma, meelukku, kodapadushadichuchinadu. Unru, kordi, unru, madigarum, unbu, patthavasangal, le, edhundirikrapadi, devan, tamil, anbu, koorigal, orakal, ku, ayatram, panninavagali, kan, kana, milai, kaaduk, kettukum, milai, avakal, manisha, vudhithik, thontrum, milai, namakko, devan, avagali, tamadha, avi, nalay, velipadithinath, andha, avi, anav, ellavachiyum, devan, nuri, ah, aarangal, yuum, aarayindhi, aarayindhi, ikradhi.
Verse fourteen says, but the natural man receiveth not the things of the spirit of God, for they are foolishness sent to him, neither can he know them, because they are spiritually discerned.
God, jatthundi. Uh, prakritsamde, anmanshudu, vittnik, grahinchalayidhu, avani, kodu, aarikku, veritharamugavani, anjab, bachathundi. Uh, padanavasatle, janmasavavam, anam, manishano, devanade, aavikravagali, eetru, kodamal, avagali, avanakku, paythi, karamaga, thontrum, endra, sala, padigradhi.
Even if we are not aware, we should receive it.
You see, we read in Galatians chapter five verse twenty-two, the fruit of the Spirit, you know. So, it's, as we read, but the fruit of the Spirit is love, joy, peace, long suffering, gentleness, goodness, faith, meekness, temperance.
When I was little, I was afraid. I was afraid of death.
Even if we are not aware, we should receive it.
See, now we really have to examine our life. See, God wants to have such a life, such a wonderful life, the life of joy and peace. You know, just imagine, you may have, you know, the problem is many a times, you know, we are not able to discern, we are not able to understand the purpose of God in our life.
When we have experienced God, we should learn from him. When we have experienced God, we should learn from him.
Even if we are not aware, we should receive it.
Now God's word says, you know, if we live by, if we walk by the Spirit, we will not fulfill the desires of the flesh.
When we have experienced God, we should learn from him.
Even if we are not aware, we should receive it.
So just, you know, we have to examine ourselves whether in life, we are walking by the Spirit or walking by the flesh.
When we have experienced God, we should learn from him. When we have experienced God, we should learn from him.
Even if we are not aware, we should receive it.
Because it is the Spirit, the fruit of the Spirit that gives us the love, joy and peace. If that is not there, our, our life will be not a very blessed life.
When we have experienced God, we should learn from him.
Even if we are not aware, we should receive it.
Many a times we see so many conflicts in our families, conflicts in our assemblies, conflicts with our friends, because you know, we are not walking by the Spirit.
When we have experienced God, we should learn from him.
Even if we are not aware, we should receive it.
See, God says, you know, we are impatient and we may be, you know, not gentle, which means actually, you know, there is something lacking in our spiritual life.
When we have experienced God, we should learn from him. When we have experienced God, we should learn from him.
We read also Galatians five twenty-two, the fruit of the Spirit also faith. And you know, faith comes by hearing the word of God, that's why if we are not hearing, we are not reading the word of God, we are not listening to him, our faith also will be at a very low end.
When we have experienced God, we should learn from him.
Even if we are not aware, we should receive it.
You know, God's word says, you know, the just shall live by faith.
When we have experienced God, we should learn from him.
Even if we are not aware, we should receive it.
In the Bible, four places it is written in Abakkuk chapter two verse four. Just shall live by, behold, just shall live by faith.
When we have experienced God, we should learn from him.
Even if we are not aware, we should receive it.
Romans chapter one seventeen also, the same thing in Galatians seven.
Romans one seventy-one, Galatians.
Hebrews chapter ten verse thirty-eight, same, you know, same thing you read. You see that, you know, the just shall live by faith. Now Hebrews ten thirty-eight, you can read that brother, so it will be everybody can.
When we have experienced God, we should learn from him. When we have experienced God, we should learn from him.
Even if we are not aware, we should receive it.
If any man, you know, turn away from it, he says, my soul shall have no pleasure in him.
When we have experienced God, we should learn from him.
Even if we are not aware, we should receive it.
You know, in Hebrews chapter eleven verse six also, we read, without faith it is impossible to please God.
When we have experienced God, we should learn from him.
Even if we are not aware, we should receive it.
So the challenge is whether we are walking by faith or by sight.
When we have experienced God, we should learn from him.
Even if we are not aware, we should receive it.
Yeah, second Corinthians chapter five verse seven says, but we walk by, not by sight.
Second Corinthians.
Yeah, so let me just continue that, you know. So the, the challenge is whether we really understand the great power of faith. Because it is faith, you know, that really pleases God. So we have to understand that we should be really having faith in our life.
When we have experienced God, we should learn from him. When we have experienced God, we should learn from him.
Even if we are not aware, we should receive it.
You know, many instances have been recorded in the Bible of the men of faith, who were able to do great things because of their faith, not nothing else.
When we have experienced God, we should learn from him.
Even if we are not aware, we should receive it.
Because faith really honors God.
When we have experienced God, we should learn from him.
Even if we are not aware, we should receive it.
We don't realize that if we don't have faith, we are really not honoring God, we are dishonoring God.
When we have experienced God, we should learn from him.
Even if we are not aware, we should receive it.
You see, we read in James chapter one and verse six. But let him ask in faith nothing wavering, for he that waveth is like a wave of sea driven with the wind and tossed. But let not that man think that he shall receive anything of the Lord.
When we have experienced God, we should learn from him. When we have experienced God, we should learn from him.
Even if we are not aware, we should receive it.
James chapter five, we read fifteen, the prayer of faith shall save the sick and the Lord shall raise him up. And if he have committed sins, they shall be forgiven him.
When we have experienced God, we should learn from him. When we have experienced God, we should learn from him.
Even if we are not aware, we should receive it.
So really, our, our life of faith reflects where we stand in the, in the, in the, how we stand in the presence of God.
When we have experienced God, we should learn from him.
Even if we are not aware, we should receive it.
So these are the, the things that God has provided, the provision he has given to us so that we may be really led by the Spirit in our life.
When we have experienced God, we should learn from him.
Even if we are not aware, we should receive it.
So how much we really spend time in prayer, that is another thing God has given to us.
When we have experienced God, we should learn from him.
Even if we are not aware, we should receive it.
If we really understood the great power of prayer, we will be spending much time on our knees.
When we have experienced God, we should learn from him.
Even if we are not aware, we should receive it.
Because prayer is a time when we are really in the presence of God.
When we have experienced God, we should learn from him.
Even if we are not aware, we should receive it.
And so we really understand, it is a very blessed time to be in the presence of God and to have his ears open to our request.
When we have experienced God, we should learn from him.
Even if we are not aware, we should receive it.
And God's word says, it is the Holy Spirit that helps us to pray in the Spirit.
When we have experienced God, we should learn from him.
Even if we are not aware, we should receive it.
So you know, because when God's word says, I want you to be holy as I am holy, let us understand what it really means to live a separated, surrendered life to him.
When we have experienced God, we should learn from him.
Even if we are not aware, we should receive it.
You know, we read in Romans chapter twelve and verse one and two, I beseech you therefore, brethren, by mercies of God, you present your bodies a living sacrifice, holy, acceptable unto God, which is your reasonable service, but be not confirmed to this world, but be transformed by the renewing of your mind, that you may prove what is that good and acceptable and perfect will of God.
When we have experienced God, we should learn from him. When we have experienced God, we should learn from him. When we have experienced God, we should learn from him. When we have experienced God, we should learn from him.
Even if we are not aware, we should receive it. Even if we are not aware, we should receive it. Even if we are not aware, we should receive it.
So it tells us, what is the perfect will of God is to be transformed in our mind and to not to be confirmed to this world.
When we have experienced God, we should learn from him. When we have experienced God, we should learn from him.
Even if we are not aware, we should receive it.
See, the constantly, the world, you know, wants us to go according to world's views, world's ways. But God's blessing will only come when we want to go God's way.
When we have experienced God, we should learn from him.
Even if we are not aware, we should receive it.
The only way to be able to do that is to offer ourselves as a living sacrifice.
When we have experienced God, we should learn from him.
Even if we are not aware, we should receive it.
Yeah, that is to, you know, to live for the Lord, not for self.
When we have experienced God, we should learn from him.
Even if we are not aware, we should receive it.
But that is the struggle in life.
When we have experienced God, we should learn from him.
We are looking forward for the blessings of this world, make more money, make more reputation, make more respect, but they mean nothing, when we really die, we take nothing with us.
When we have experienced God, we should learn from him.
Even if we are not aware, we should receive it.
But the Lord is able to do everything for us, his word says, he is able to do exceedingly abundantly more than we can ask a thing.
When we have experienced God, we should learn from him.
Even if we are not aware, we should receive it.
And God's word says, you know, you delight in the Lord and he will fulfill our desires.
When we have experienced God, we should learn from him.
Even if we are not aware, we should receive it.
You see, God's very first commandment is we should love him with all our heart, mind and soul. And next is to love our neighbor as ourselves.
When we have experienced God, we should learn from him.
Even if we are not aware, we should receive it.
See, many times we fail at very first, we do not love the Lord with all our heart, mind and soul. So we cannot even love and fulfill this second commandment also.
When we have experienced God, we should learn from him.
Even if we are not aware, we should receive it.
So we really have to examine ourselves constantly. Because God has given us this privilege and this provision. You know, when we sin, we go immediately and confess, his word says in first John chapter one verse nine. If we confess our sins, he is faithful and just to forgive us and cleanse us from all unrighteousness. "If we confess our sins, he is faithful and just to forgive us and cleanse us from all unrighteousness."
कार्ड मन यदि यह कमान वन परिषद इंच कंट्रोल नाद मन वो कुंडा उन्हाली देवन वाक्य सलाह स्थिर मारो दया ना बतिका मुद्दा देवन तनु वचन प्रकार मन पापुल मन उपकरण एडल्ट आयन बमदायन आयन अन्न मन पापुल शमिंची समस्या दर्ने तर्णे मन प्रवेद तर्ण चेयर ने सलाह
आगे नम
चिंता
आगे नम्मा नामे इड़ाविड़ा मल आराइंड पार्ट कोंड रिकवेंड यम अदे विनमा गोन रियो वन किल्ली रुक वन राम अधिक वन दाम वस्लम तेल सन्नोद नम्री पावंगले नाम अरिकेटा पावंगले नमक मन्नित्ते यल्ला अनियायत्यूं नीकी नम्मा यसुदी करिपतर के अवर उन्मयूं नीरू उल्लवरा इरकरा एन वसली रागे नम्री पावन नाम अवर डुटली अरिकेट वेंड वर्ग लागेर क्रो
See when the Lord really wants to bless us beyond our comprehension, he also has provided for us all the provisions that he gives us to achieve that.
कार्ड निजिंगा देवड़ मारा नंतक आना मारो टू इंच चुंदा इंटरनेट को आशीर्वाद चुको रुतुन पुरु जाने ने मारो पोंदर तक कोरके देवड़ समस्या बने सदुपाया लुड़ा नान आयन अनुक्रिया
आगे देवन नाम योशिकत अक्कद योशित नम्री योशनिक वरादर कुम अधिक अधिक माग नम्मा आशीर्वाद दिप्रा आग अवर इरकुंबल दे अवर कु तकदा आगे नाम अधिन पड़ी नड़ी दुकोल व कड़मी पट्टी रिकरो
So if we really read his word, meditate on his word and consider what all great blessings he can give us, you know we will not have the love for this world but only for the Lord.
कार्ड देवन वाक्य ने चदवी मारकी आयन यवगोर ने ट्रंडी आशीर्वाद दिवन नी कोडा मन कम कर्दन जैस्कुंडा इन अट्ठाई ते मनम इलोक मन कुच टूंडी प्रेम कलियुंग ने केवल मुद्दों ने मारो प्रेम इंच
नाम इन देवड़ वस्लते नलराग वासित्त दित पूरिंदु कोंड देवन नमको कोडका पोगर यल्ला आशीर्वाद वादंगल अरिंदा वर्ग लागन नाम इरुंदा इंद वोलगत्तील पर पोगर इंद आशीर्वाद गला यल्ला वच्चुम नाम अधि विरुमा मल रुप
So God is it is possible for us because there are many, God has given us many examples of people who have you know who have lived a holy life.
कार्ड इस साध्य में एन दुकंटे देवड़ मनको ये विदंगा परिषद जीत जीविंच ट्रंड अनेक विश्वास अनेक वंद विश्वास लिया कम माधिर नी मन याद देवड़ इंच
इंद कार्य नम्मा लमुड़ियम येन राल अनेक परिषद वालंगल विश्वास तन्ना जीवित तिरी जीवित इरकर अनेक रे कुर्ती दिव्या दमतल इरकर दागे नाम इधि सया मुड़ियम
We have an example of Brother Bhaksing who left everything of this world and followed the Lord totally.
कार्ड देवन को गप्पा उदार नगा साधन बख्सिंग अर्गरो मर इल्लोक मन समस्त नान विच पट्टी प्रभु नार इंच
नमको परिय उदार मागे साधन बख्सिंग अर्ग रिकर आरगल इंद वोलगत्ती लेरकर यल्ला वच्चुम विट्टी विट्टी और कर्त्र ये पिन तोड़न दार
You see he didn't have a bank balance but I'm sure he never lacked anything.
आयन के एप्पलो कुड़ा बैंक लो बैलेंस ले द कानी नाक तेलिसन द अर्ग गुर आयन एप्पलो कुड़ा इंटरनेट कोरता कलिये
अवर की ओर पोद व एप्पल दुम अवर के बैंक बैलेंस इर्णद ले आना लवर के एदु एप्पल दुम यदु में कुरयु पट्टा दिलाई
Nothing for himself, nothing, no, no, nothing for himself, you know, everything he did for God, as God asked him to do, he would do it, you know, in obedience to him.
कार्ड तनक कोरके तन एली कुड़ा उंच कोले दु देवड़ चपन नीतिलो देवड़ के विदेव चुभिस्तो तन समस्त उच्च नोड कुंड
अवर कागा अवर वन रूमे वैथ कलम ले देवन ये प्रिसित्तर रो अंदा वार्ते कवर कील पड़िद यापड़ी नड़न वंदा
See when the Lord's word we just read, you know, because he wants us to do all this in obedience to him, that is the he has given his word
कार्ड मन देवन वाक्य ने चुष्कन अंगल आयन के विदेव ले ना पिल्ला लवर एवन ने चेयर ने कोर्ट
आ देवड़ उस्तरे नंबर तोम अवर के कील पड़ी गिर पिल्ले गलागे विल्ला वच्चु नाम सया वेंड
Because we want to do our own, we miss all the blessings that God wants to do for us.
विशाल जैस्कुंडा प्राइतनार मन तांकन करे देवड़ मारी किस्ता में इंटरनेट प्रत्या आशीर्वाद अनिमान कोल्प तूना
नाम नमक संद विषयंगल नाम से दुकोल रुदले आयत मार्कन आगे देवन नमको कोडका पेर आशीर्वाद वादंगल यल्ला नाम इरंद पोर लागेर क्रो
No problem when we face in life, we have, we can, we don't have to worry because God's word says, "Don't be anxious about anything, but with prayer and supplication, thanksgiving, bring it to God and he will give us the peace that passes understanding."
कार्ड इन नौकर जरित नटल विशाल देने को रिच कोड चिंतित तो नासुन ले दें दुकंटे देवन वाक्य सलाह स्थिर निश्चिम एंड टे देने को रिच चिंतित चकुल कानी में के नपम नु प्राधना प्राधना विद्या पर नु क्रसुंड दापोरक गा नाग तेले चेडी अपुर मी कुमे समस्त ज्ञान मुनको मिंच नटल समाधारम ने ममले एलच एल नो अंच
आ दे यदि कुर्ती तुम कवले पड़ते वेले देवड़ वस्लम सलगरदे यनि के उंगले सिंदा यल्ला वच्चुम इनमें वे इंगल नान यल्ला वच्चुम पूछ से दुम उंगल के तरिगरे आगे यदि कुर्ती तुम नी कवले पड़ामल यल्ला जब विन्नपंगल यल्ला में निडतिल कोंड वारंगल एंड उस सलगर
God has given you know wonderful promises, one year the promise for me was Jeremiah 33:3, which says, "Call unto me; I will answer thee and show you great and mighty things you do not know."
कार्ड देवन वाक्य ने मुक्त देवन 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 सांगत रण नी के तेले जैत रु
यल्ला वागदत्तीन इधूर वागदत्त मारकर यरमियान पत्तिंग वन राम अधिकार मन राम वस्लते यन्ने नो की कोपिड आप पोल द नान उनके नान उनको उत्तर कोड ते नी अरियाद दुम उनके यट्टाद दुमाना परिय कार्यंगले उनके अरिवी पे
Even I received that promise, that is the promise when we pick up in the beginning of the year, one year that was a promise, it was so encouraging for me. Whenever you know there's a trouble, I would pray claiming that promise.
कार्ड ने आविक वागदान ने पुन्ना पुरु ने अंतो संतोष इंच चवनी येले नवक समस्त आगोचना पुरु आयका वागदान चेपटी प्राधान्य जैस्कुंडा
इंद वागदत्त नाम पेटर्बोल मिगोम संतोष पट्टी ने यदावर कुलपम नेरिटा रनकी इंद वागदत्ते नाम एड तुकोंडा नाम जीविपत नागेर दे
You see, these promises, as I said, you know Bible is full of promises. We have so many wonderful promises, if we really believe that promise and claim that promise, God will fulfill that promise because he has given it to us, so he is bound by that promise.
कार्ड देवन वाक्य ने जपन इंटरनेट अनेक मन इंटरनेट वागदान उतन निप्पड़ी ने मन वाली कुड़ा तेज को नी चेपटी प्राधान्य जैस्कुंडा पुरु आयन तप्पक दान ने नरवची पदरे नार एंड दुकंटे आयन वागदान विच अगेन का वागदान चेता
वेद आगम सलेरे रे यल्ला वस्लम वागदत्त नान अनेकम आगेर करदे यदि वागदत्त मनानु कनाम एड ते अधि कई पड़ी ते अधि कुर्ती जीवित नाम अधि अनुसरित तान नमक नाडक कुम येन एंड वागदत्त तंगल यल्ला कर्त्रे नमक इरैक्वा एड दी कोड तेरिकर
So you see that God can really bless us to experience his faithfulness and his power in our life.
मन जीत लो आयन ने नमकत्ता ने आयन शक्ति ने अनुभव इंच नटलिका मनल ने आयन आशीर्वाद चुकल
नम्री वाह नम्री वालके ले अवर्ड नंबीके यूं और वाल्लम यूं ना मरियम बड़ी अवर नम्मा आशीर्वाद दिप्रा गागेर क्रा
He said, "I will never leave you nor forsake you."
ने नी नन्ने विडो ने नन्ने याद बायन ने
नान उन्हें नान उन्हें विडो दम ले यूं ने तू ने विट्टी विलग दम ले एंड रान सलेर क्रा
See when we really claim that promise, how can we be anxious, how can we be afraid when the Lord has given such wonderful promises?
कार्ड देवन निजिंगा आयका वर्धन चेपट नापुर मन एंड को आतर्क कलिकी भाई पड़ी जोर रहा मन एंड एंड कुंडा मन
नाम नाम इप्पड़ पट
देवी च
नाम इप्पड़ पट वागदत्त तंगल कई पड़ी कुम बोल यदि अदरकागन नाम अमसर पट्टी बयात तोड़न नाम इरुक्रो इप्पर पट वागदत्त नम कोड तेरिकरा रेंड नाम नाम बे नंबर वेंड
This year's promise for me was, you know, in Acts chapter 13, verse 33, it says, "You are my son."
कार्ड अपुस्तिन कार्य व पदमुड़ा देवन मुक्त मुड़ा वचन उन्ही इस आंत्र वागदान देवन नागिच रे नी ना कुमार दुगुनी
इन नद वर्डत्तीन वागदत्तम कर्त्र ने कोड ते द अपुस्तिन अर्वेंगल परिमुद्रा मध्यकारम पद मुप्पति मुंड्रा वस्लत्रे नी यन ड़्या कुमारन इंटर सलापड़े
What a wonderful promise I said, I thought, but you know, this promise is available to everyone. It says, John chapter 1, verse 12 says, "To all those who believe on him, he gives the power to become the children of God."
कार्ड इस चक्र वागदान मु इस चक्र वागदान में इत्ते आइटे इप्पर पर मन अंदर इकड़ा एत कंटे यान सात मात्र दे मत पर नदा वचन आयन इंटरनेट आयन ने विश्वास मुझे आदमी आयन ने पिल्ला लगती गया अधिकार मिच अर्मी सलाह स्थिर
आल इंद वागदत्तम नन्नो नल्ला वागदानम उम यल्ला कुम पर कोड़ी वागदानम आयर क्रिया वन स्टेशन वन राम अधिकारम पनरेंडा वस्तु ले अवर्ड दामत्तीनाले विश्वास विश्वासम लवरगलाई अवर ये टू कंडोर लुकी यत्तनी पेर्गलो अत्तनी पेर्गलो कुम देवड़ ने पिल्ले गलागुम बड़ी अवर कुल अधिकार कोड ता
You see when I really believe that promise, when I really understand that Almighty God is saying, "I am his son", how wonderful it is to go to him, to worship him, to thank him for all that he has done thus far in my life.
कार्ड इस निगाह वागदान ने पुन्ना पुरु ने अर्धन जैस्कुंडा पुरु पर आयत सरोशक देवड़ ने आयन आयन के ने कुमारन अंच चकुल पुरु आयन अद्वती ले आयन आराधिंचे आयन सतिंचे का आयन नाजित लोच चेस नटल टी इंद अवर कुन नाजित रज ने मेल उपकरण नटल बट आयन सतिंचे इश्वर ने अंतो संतोष इंच
इप्पर पट वागदत्त तंगले नाम पूरिंदु कोंड मुर्दे अवर यन ने नेसित्ते यनमेल आनु कोर्नी इप्पर पट वागदत्त तंगले कोड तार एन वर का अवर याले तले सिंदु अवर कुन नान एवलो वो स्तोत्रिक का अवर इतुदीकन नाम कड़मी पट्टी रिकरे
I am not perfect but you know whenever there's something goes wrong, immediately if I confess and ask God to forgive me, he is ready to forgive.
कार्ड ने परिपुण ने कान गानी एप्पल एतरन तक पुरु पर पड़ी जैस्कुंडा वेंड ने देवन यदि कोली पर शमापड़ कोरना पुरु वेंड ने नान शमिस्ता
नान ओर बोधम परिपोरन नागी ले इर्णालुम नाम तवर से दबोदे कर्त्र तले सिंदु कर्त्र ये ना पांद विदमाग से देन नमनी उन सलमुर द अवर मनी पवर आगेर क्रा नान ओरु बोधम परिपुरन्नाग, इल्लाई, इरुन्दालुम नान तवर सय्यदुबोधे, कर्त्रलत्तिले सिंध, कर्त्रे नापांदविदमाग सय्यदे, निन मन्नीयुम सुलमुर्दा, अवर मन्नी पवराग रिकरा।
So my, my desire is that I may fulfill God's desire to live a holy life and for, I thank God for the provisions he has given to me.
कबड़े नायक कोरिके इन्डे, देवन यक्का कोरिका ने टुंडी, परिषद्धांगा जीविच। नाक इच्छने टुंडी, सदुपायालु बट कुड़ा, ने नान स्तोकिस्तु।
यन्नडिय विरुपमेनुन, राना देवनुकाग परिषद्धमाग वालवेंडु, मिल्मदरकाग, अदरकाग कर्त्रकोड़ते, यल्ला सदुपायंगलु नान अदी, येट्टुकुंडे, अदरकाग नाम वालवेंडु।
It's my desire that each and every believer may live a holy life, the life that God says, be holy for I am holy, may his desire be fulfilled in our life.
कबड़े नायक कोरिकु, प्रतिविश्वास पक्षिंग एंड टेंटे, देवड़ु युद्धिंगा इत्तच्छपरु, ने परिषद्ध नैनुलाई, विन्न परिषद्धलाई इन्डीयनी, आविदमाय टुंडी, देवनी कोरिका, प्रतिविश्वास पक्षिंग नरवच्छुबड़ाली।
यन्नडिय विरुपमेनुन, राना देवने पेसुनिरकर, नान परिषद्धनारिकर, नींगुम परिषद्धरा इरुंगले नु सुलिख, यल्ला विश्वासिकलुम, अंदविदमाग देवन सन्न वन्नमाग, परिषद्धमाग वालवेंडुम, इन्न बदा दान।
And we just thank God for the provisions he has given to us in his word, provisions he has given to us by giving us the Holy Spirit when we believe on him, the provision he has given to us that we can pray to him anytime, all the time, you know, these are the, and the provision that we may be growing in the faith, experiencing his faithfulness in our life.
कबड़ी, इरंतर कोरके, देवड़ु मन किच्छने नु सदुपायाम निट्टु बटी, आयन वाक्यम बटी, आयन विश्वासिच्चनपुरु, आयन मन किच्छन परिषद्धात्कु देवुन बटी, ए समय मन अप्पुड़िकी, आयन अद्वकुरु, प्राधिंच्चतकु, मन किच्छन टुंडी, प्रात्न सदुपायानु बटी, विटानिकदारा, मनमायने कमच्चितनाली, मन अनुव्वेच्चुगलु तुन्ना, दान्न बटी, विटानिट्टु बटी, मनमायने स्तुतिस्ता।
देवन नमक पड़तन्दा वाग्द, वस्णत्तिन प्रकारमागुम, नाम जवन सेमुदर, बदिल कुड़ीकरार इन्नर दरकागुम, यल्ला वच्चुम नाम कोडविसय देवन, परिषद्धवानगले कुड़ा, नम्मयुम परिषद्धवानगलाग, अवर माटी नडितकरार इन्नर दरकागुम, यल्ला सदुपायंगलु नम कोड़ता, आग्याल नाम अवराई, तुदीक्क कड़मी पट्टीरिकरू।
May the Lord help us to have a forgiving spirit.
युद्धचे आत्नम, मन कलिनुन टिका, देवड़ु मन साहयम चेनिका।
मन्निकर आवी नमक कोड़क्का तक्कदा आग, कर्त्रकी नाम वेंडिरू।
Because you know, sometimes when we have things against people, we miss the blessings of God.
एले इन्डे कोनिपरयालु, मन देव, इतर प्रजल पक्षिंग का, सत्रतो नपुरु, देवन आशिरादमल मन कोल्पयानु कुंटा।
येन अंडा, मटोरु, अनेकमोरे, मटोरु पक्षमाग, नमके दादु विरोधमिरुन्दा, नाम देवन आशिरवादंगल परामल पोगरू।
You know, God's word lists all the things that really, you know, distract us from, from the blessing that he desires to give us by not, not obeying his commandments.
कबड़ी देवन वाक्यमु, मनकी आयन योवदालच्छुकुन्ना टुंडी, आशिरादमल मन कोल्पोटानु की कारणमाने टुंडी, आयन आज्ञल अधिक्रमण अगुरिंची, अन्न शाल आज्ञपट्टा।
देवन वस्णत्तले अवर कोडिकर आशिरवादंगल, यल्ला वच्चुम कोडित्ते, अवर कटले यल्ला, कुरित्ते, अवर सीगरांदा आशिरवादंगल, नाम इल्लंदपोर लागिरकरू।
You may think that, you know, we are not doing any idolatry, but you know, many times God's word says, covetousness is idolatry.
कबड़ी, अनेक परियालु, मन विक्रहारदना चेट्टुन लेदुन मन अनुपुन्तम कानी, देवन वाक्य सलस्तुन विषयम इन्नर टेंटे, आशिंच्चुट्टु कुड़ावोका, विक्रहारदने।
अनेकमोरे नाम निनकरून, नम यंदा विक्रत्तीम, नाम पुझिप्पतिले, सेविप्पतिले निनकरू, आनाल नाम आशीपड़वधे यदु विक्रमुमाग, अदु पावमाग रिकरदे।
So jealousy, you know, opens the door for many sins.
अस्वय अनेट्टुंडी, अनेक पापुमुलतु द्वारंतर चेदु कांटुदी।
परामय इन्वधे, अनेक पावंगलुक, अदु कदमे तिरप्पताग रिकरदे।
May, we may request the Lord to lead us and guide us because God's word says, it's the Holy Spirit that leads us and guides us. So maybe be obedient to the Spirit of God, his leading.
कबड़ी, मनम, मनचितमलो, यक्का परिषद्धात्कु देवड़े, मन नडिपिंची, मन नायकत्रोहिंचे देवड़ु, कबड़ी, आयन नमरे नडिपिंचाली, नायकत्रोहिंचाली, मन कोर्दा।
नम्मे जीवितले, परिषद्धान, अवर्डे नडित्तुदलाई, अवर नडप्पदन, नडप्पिप्पदरकाग, नाम अदे अवर्डे डुथली केटकेवेंडु।
See, the Holy Spirit is the spirit that really sanctifies us.
कबड़े परिषद्धात्म देवड़े, मनलु परिषद्ध परिचय टुंडी, आत्मा।
परिषद्ध आवी याना अवरे, नम्मे परिषद्ध पड़तिकर, आवी आय रिकरा।
1 Corinthians Chapter Six Verse Eleven.
मदतिकोरिंद्रिकास्मित्रिकारो देवम, पदकुंडावु।
वोन्ड्र कोरिंद्रा, आराम दिकरम, पदनाराम वस्णम।
And Holy Spirit is the one which leads us and guides us.
कबड़े देवन आत्मा, मनलु नडिपिंची, मनलु, मनलु नडिपिंचावाडु।
देवड़ु आवी नम्मे नडित्तुपवर।
Yeah, God's word, Romans eight fourteen says, as many as led by the Spirit of God, they are the sons of God.
रोमेल ग्रास्मित्री, एनुदे पत्नारी सलस्तुनमाट्टु, देवन आत्मचत्तंदम नडिपिंपड़िद्रवार, अदु देवन कुमारलाय इन्दुरु।
रोमरकेन्द्र, रोमे एट्टाम दिकरम, पदनाराम वस्णत्तिले, देवनुडे आवीनाल, आवीनाले नडित्तपड़िगर, यत्नाई पेर नडित्तपड़िगरारगल, अवर, अवरकल, देवनुडे पुत्ररलाय रिकरारगल।
God's word also reminds us not to grieve the Holy Spirit, Ephesians Chapter four thirty-one.
मे देवन वाक्य कड़मानी, जाक्किनियस्तुन विषयम इन्टे, फिल्गास्मित्रिका नालु मोप्पियुत्लो, मन परिषद्धात्मलो दुखपड़च्च कोड़दु।
देवन वस्णत्तिले नाम कुलपड़िगरदे, इन्न अंडा, इप्सरिकरदे, नान मोपति अंडले, परिषद्धावी नाम दुखपड़ता कोड़ादे।
Five thirty, so you know, we have to be very conscious of our behavior, conscious of our life, conscious of our thoughts, conscious of our, you know, thinking also that, you know, it may not grieve the Holy Spirit.
कबड़ी नाल, एफसिल्गास्मिन नालु मोप्पियुत्लो, देवन ने परिषद्धात्म दुखपड़च्च, कबड़े मन जीतल, मन अन्नी प्रवत्रम, मन नडिका, मन अन्नी तालम्पुल, मन कॉलेजन प्रत्युविषयमुन, वंशज जागप्पगल उंडाली, वाडिदारम, निवात्रम, परिषद्धात्म नी दुखपड़च्च पड़दे।
एपिसरिकल निर्म, नान कम्मन ओपतान वस्णत्तिले, परिषद्धावी दुखपड़ता दिरिंगल, निदिरकर, नम्मे नडित्ते यल्लु, नम्मे सैगलु, योशनिकलु, यल्ला वच्चुम, परिषद्धावी नाम दुखपड़ताबल, नम्मे नामे काट्तुकलवेंडु।
May the Lord help us to live a holy life as he desires us to.
कबड़े देवड़ु कोरिनकिला, आयका परिषद्ध जीवतन जीवनच्चुट्टु परकाई, मनको देवड़ु साहयम चेनिका।